All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, October 17th. Welcome to our regular meeting. There is an echo. Might be this thing right there. I will have our city clerk start our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe?
Here, 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 here.
Councilmember Kent Trane?
Trent Kane is here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Retuja Ndepore?
Here.
Councilmember Roshino Farrell?
Here.
All are present. Back to you, Mayor Clark.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Great, thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell, can I have you do the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely.
You got it?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights on this land, specifically the Snokeami Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, next up, we have public comment. I see potentially two.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine.
All right, James?
Plan to create a tech campus supported with ecotourism on my property. At the time, the feedback I seemed to get from council was, it's a great idea, just don't have the time or the resources to take on such an effort due to this comp plan update and the focus being housing. The more I got into coming up with that proposal and the effort I put into it, I realized the natural beauty that my property had to offer. And the ecotourism was something I really wanted to retain. So with this comp plan update and with the docket process, I came up with another, basically, idea based off of ecotourism with some sort of component to support it. Seems like housing is what the talk of the day is right now. So I put that in for a docket request. It came up in the last week's meeting. There was no discussion really about it at all. Without any other public forum, I'm only limited to my three minutes up here to talk about stuff. So I look forward to my public hearing, the planning commission, and then with the city council. But really, I implore you guys to send me any questions that you might have. I'm an open book. I'll tell you any answers you want to hear or don't want to hear. But I'm at a crossroads. I've owned the land for about 17 years. It's interesting. I got my property taxes the other day, and I'm sure, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but on our property taxes, our housing values have gone down significantly for 2024. But our land values are, most of my property's doubled. So land is scarce. There's just not much left. I have 100 acres. It's contiguous without any changes to the existing code. That's all I have to work with, is what currently the law allows, which I don't think is necessarily best for the property, given the beauty and all the different assets that it has to offer to the city. But without any other changes, that's all I have to go by, and I'll just develop it under the current law. But if we're able to, through the public process, find out if we can, you know, come up with a planned unit development, offer some of these ecotourist ideas that I'd like to focus on, and then figure out if we can support it with another component, which right now seems to be, housing seems to be the focus, then great. But without moving past this phase gate of the docket, there's just no way to take it any further, and it is what it is, which is okay. But it would just kind of be sad, I think. So please send me your questions, and I will answer them before these public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? All right, move to online.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. We have two in attendance for public comment. I'll unmute the callers in the order they've raised their hands. You have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating the name and the city you live for the record. I'll now unmute the first caller.
Good evening. This is Mary Victor. I wanted to thank you for the work that's being done for our parks, the many parks that we have and the park staff. I also went to the Most Racist in Park meeting. And particularly, I wanted to speak tonight on Beaton Hill. I think all the presentations I saw and the plans for are really great. And there's a little problem because on 218th Avenue Southeast, I wrote Northeast in my email, it just really doesn't even have a shoulder on the road. It's really narrow and skinny. So actually, the mayor had spoken up and said that she walks there a lot and would like to have something different. And I think a few more people chimed in, and I sent in some ideas and spoke a couple times. And today, I was actually able to go on and photograph the natural trail that has been opened, its mode. There are signs for where you can go, there are signs for where you can't go. And it's a really beautiful area. The trees and the leaves are starting to change, and it's just really natural and quiet, which is way different than being on the road when cars are going by. So I think the park, I forget how big it was, I think it was six acres or more, that the city bought, I thought was a really good thing. It's right next to Big Rock Park. You can actually walk from the top of the hill at Northeast Fifth Place. You can even park up there because there's wide parking shoulder, and then walk down, and you can get to Big Rock Park. So my request tonight is, please keep doing those things. Please make sure our parks are available as much as we can to have people, even if the master plans take a while. And then I think anytime that we do a project, we need to look at the maximum connectivity that could be to that site from anywhere, not just one location or two. And I would like that to be done for the parks and also for the schools, where we are having a lot of the community things, that people can rent fields and things. So I think we should always look for schools, parks, and any neighborhoods. We should try to make as much connectivity as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll unmute the next caller.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stiknis-Mamish, and congratulations on our Silver Jubilee planning that is coming up. Let's see, did I get cut off? Hold on one second here.
We still have you, Paul. You're good.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
No, you're good.
Okay. My comment tonight is about changing false premises on housing into authentic ones. And it's not a fun or enjoyable comment, but it absolutely has to be said. You know, you could call it tough truths. The first false premise to remedy in Samamish is, existing housing supplies in Samamish simply have never been optimized to meet lifetime and legacy housing needs for those living and working in Samamish. The second false premises, there were several misleading or off-base foundations in our recent growth target process, including the number of homes built, sewer moratorium, growth targets being minimum, not dealing with past affordable housing targets, land capacity, et cetera. The third false premises is, specific quantified surplus and shortage housing gap numbers were not, or excuse me, were missing from our 2022 Housing Needs Analysis for all economic segments, demographic groups, and workforce housing. Quantified gap shortage and surplus housing numbers did not inform our 2023 Housing Action Plan, which has been subsequently renamed the Housing Diversification Toolkit. These three false premises combined into a major issue, which is not having adequate housing supplies for the residents of our city to stay over life and for future generations. This problem has existed over the last 20 years and threatens to persist for another 10. What are the price ranges of the greatest housing need in Samamish? The greatest magnitude of shortages is market rate housing from $500,000 to $1,000,002. Of middle magnitude is affordable housing from $175,000 to $500,000. And of lesser magnitude, but still significant, are condos and townhomes priced above $1.2 million that can serve the needs of some high incomes in Samamish that want housing types other than single-family homes. At the Saturday, October 21st comp plan meeting, I'll present part two of this comment, which is how to organically begin to catch up net positive, low-impact, lifetime and legacy housing supplies that holistically benefit the community and the city far greater than development interest. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
And that's all for public comment this evening. Back to you, Mayor Clark.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have executive session. We have land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110-1B and pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110-1I. Council may take action after, and I see 30 minutes? Great, what time is it? So we'll be back at 7:15. Thank you. All right, council is extending by 10 minutes, so we'll be back at 7:25. Thank you. All right, welcome back. Councilmember Ndepore?
I move to pull item number five from the consent agenda. Second?
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? None?
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with Comcast Cable Communications LLC, consistent with the recommendations of the city's outside legal counsel.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I move to authorize offers of settlement pursuant to RCW 39.04.240 in the pending Issaquah Falls City Road Project lawsuit in the amounts recommended by the city's outside legal counsel.
Second?
All right, moved and double seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the administrative settlements with the Klahani Homeowners Association related to the Issaquah Falls City Road Project for monument sign replacement and acquisition of roadway easements in the amounts recommended by the city's right-of-way agent and project manager.
Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you, council member. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. Any other further discussion or questions on the remaining? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, then we have our proclamations. Councilmember Stewart for Lung Cancer Awareness Month.
Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths among men and women in the United States, and the second most common cause of death in the U.S. exceeded only by heart disease. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is about 59%, yet only 17% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. And whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality by 20% when compared to screening by chest X-ray in a national lung screening trial, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women, as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trails, trails, far behind funding for research of many other cancers, and additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, each year more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer, and by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas African Americans have the highest lung cancer incidence and mortality of all races, and disparities in lung cancer screening, diagnosis, treatment, and mortality are well-characterized among African Americans and other racial minorities. And whereas lung cancer in people who have never smoked is the seventh-leading cause of cancer-related death and accounts for 17,000 to 26,000 deaths in the United States every year, 60 to 70% of never smokers diagnosed with lung cancer are women. And the proportion of lung cancers diagnosed in those who have never smoked is increasing in the U.S. And whereas organizations working in the Samamish community, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Washington. Therefore, Mayor Kaylee Clark and the Samamish City Council do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encourage all residents to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Howe, Extra Mile Day?
November 1st, Extra Mile Day. Whereas Samamish is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual residents collectively go that extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Samamish is a community which encourages its residents to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Samamish is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Samamish acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create an extra, rather 550, 550 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2023. Now therefore, Kaylee Clark, Mayor of Samamish, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2023 to be Extra Mile Day, and urge each individual in the community to take time on this day, not only to go the extra mile in their own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, unfinished business. Welcome to our parks meeting.
Mayor Clark, I just had a question for clarification. Did you remove number five from the agenda?
Oh, we will get you those motions.
Okay.
But we did remove and then discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. We have several items on the agenda tonight. Our first topic for your consideration is the adoption of the master plans for Beaton Hill Park and Big Rock Park South. Both parcels were held in ownership by the same families for several years. The Beaton parcel by the Beaton family for over 80 years before the city purchased it back in 2018. And Big Rock South was home to Mary Pigott for over 50 years before she donated it to the city in 2021. We are very excited for this milestone and for Mary Pigott and Nancy Wade, Chair of the Parks Commission, to join us this evening and say a few words. Staff have completed all the stages of the city's master planning process with extensive public engagement, and we are confident that when built, both these parcels will be great additions to the park system. Tonight, we are seeking council's authorization to adopt the master plan. Design and construction phases will follow at a later date when council allocates budget for each phase and park. With that, I'll now hand it over to Kevin Teague, Deputy Director of our department, to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali, and thank you, Madam Mayor and council. For the record, my name is Kevin Teague. I'm the Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. And we are very pleased to bring you this first item tonight. It is the adoption of the master plans of Beaton Hill Park and Big Rock Park South. And this is the culmination of over a year of effort and preparation, and represents significant public engagement. Before handing the presentation off to Shelby Peralta, our park project manager, I wanted to acknowledge her and her expertise in shepherding this process from start to finish. She put in a tremendous effort and really went above and beyond to provide the community with ample opportunities to voice their opinions about what they hoped for in these parks. Her vigilance in guiding the process with her keen eye for design has resulted in two fantastic park designs that will continue to benefit the community of Samamish for many years to come in the future. So Shelby, let me hand it off to you.
Thank you, Kevin, for those very kind words. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. I am very excited to share that after over a year of planning and extensive public outreach, like Anjali and Kevin mentioned, we are here tonight seeking approval from city council on two items. First is to approve a resolution to adopt the Beaton Hill Park Master Plan. And second is to approve a resolution to adopt the Big Rock Park South Master Plan. As part of my presentation, I'll give a brief introduction to master planning and the two parks. I'll walk through project timeline and our outreach, and then I'll end on an overview of the final master plans before opening up for discussion. So starting off with an introduction to master planning and the project sites, I wanted to give a quick refresher of what exactly is a master plan. It's a long-term vision for a park. So before starting development or improvements to parkland, a master plan process is initiated. And this engages the community at large, stakeholders, staff, the commission, and you are council. And this helps us to look at the park comprehensively. And there are three primary phases of a master plan. First is investigation and analysis. Second is park program, where we get input from the community, commission, and council on hopes, dreams, and concerns to help inform the design and character of the park. And then third is master plan development. During this phase, there are a number of iterations of park designs, starting with three concepts, which get narrowed down into one preferred plan. And during this phase, we get feedback on the program, the character, and potential sequence of improvements. And the end product is a report. The master plan reports that we have prepared for these two parks will provide a framework for addressing development in the future. Next is site context. So Beaton Hill Park and Big Rock South are centrally located in the city and are outlined in red. Beaton Hill is located half a mile west of Samamish Commons and the Town Center Boundary. It's across the street from the three Big Rock Park properties, which are all connected and terminate with Big Rock South at Southeast 20th. Where we are in the process. So we kicked off the project in early 2022. We went through a series of public meetings to get feedback on hopes, dreams, and concerns, as well as concept alternatives and preferred plans. We received consensus on the preferred plans in March 2023 and began our SEPA review process. We are now at the point where that SEPA review is complete. The master plan reports have been finalized, and we are ready to adopt both park master plans. Next, moving on to existing conditions. So Beaton Hill Park has open meadows and rolling hills in the south with steeper slopes in the upper half and sensitive areas throughout the site. There is also a tree preservation area, which is filled in red on the graphic, and this is designated for permanent conservation. Hold on one second. I think I just lost my screen. Here we go. Okay, perfect. Then moving on to Big Rock South, there are gardens around the residence, a network of trails, mature tree canopy in the northern half, and relatively flat, open meadows on the rest of the property.
Excuse me, Shelby. Can you advance your slide? We're looking at slide nine.
Oh, let me stop sharing for just a second, and then I'll start sharing because it's showing correct on my screen. Bear with me. Okay. Okay, is this showing correct, Kevin, on the structures now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So there are five structures on the property. There is a pool house and sport court, a single-family residence, two garages, as well as a large barn. And then next, moving on to our outreach and what we heard from our public process. So we started off with a public workshop and survey to hear the community's vision for the parks, as well as meetings with the commission and council. And from those meetings, we developed overarching goals for the park master plans, which would set the framework for developing our initial park concepts. And these four goals that you see on the screen here were continually referred back to throughout the entire master planning process. Taking those goals that you saw, the project team then prepared three concepts for each park. Now, this is a high-level summary, but we looked at different locations for site access, parking and capacity, programmatic uses, and the orientation of those programs, as well as shifting programs between the two sites to help determine which site was the best fit for those programs. We had 475 participants in the second round of our outreach survey. And what we heard is that the three concepts for each park generally appealed to the community. There wasn't one concept that overwhelmingly fell behind or pulled ahead of another in terms of preferences, as you can see on the graphs to the right of the screen. Now, this is one of my favorite slides to see. We, this, which is the programming for the master plans. The programming for each site overall did a great job of meeting the community's hopes and dreams. And the existing building reuse was still supported by the community after seeing what options there were for renovations. So from this point, we received a number of feedback from the community, reviewed it, revised the concept alternatives, and presented preferred plans for each park. Now, the final plans that you'll be seeing tonight match the preferred plans that were presented to you back in March of this year. So we'll start off with Beaton Hill Park. There are two parking lots on site, one in the north and one in the south. The majority of parking is located in the south, whereas parking in the north is primarily intended to provide ADA access to support uses in the northern corner. to support uses in the northern corner. The plan shows four pickleball courts, and I'm using my little laser here. And there is a restroom to the right of the courts. The off-leash dog area is approximately one acre. And there is a pee patch located in the center of the park and has a capacity of forty plots. And as you can see, there are a number of uses in this central space of the park. So it was really important to think through circulation and provide adequate widths for trails, buffering when needed, and also allow for gathering areas. And these gathering areas are noted in the red pink color and are all throughout the site. The trail system has a primary paved trail that is accessible, and this is noted in white. And then we also have those thinner trails in the northern half of the property in that light brown color, and those are soft surface trails. And then moving down to the southern portion of the site, there's also a boardwalk that's overlooking the wetland. And then lastly, we have hillside play incorporated in the northern half of the park and utilizes the existing topography. So approximate costs for each segment are provided on this slide. Included in these costs are mobilization and overhead, soft costs such as design and engineering, sales tax, as well as a substantial contingency. South Park improvements are noted in pink, the north in yellow, and then nature trails in green. And just wanting to note here that funds for implementing the master plan may be budgeted for and improvements completed in phases from our Park CIP over time. And funds are not currently identified in our Park CIP for improvements at Beaton Hill Park. And then moving on to Big Rock South, starting a little zoomed out. The entrance into the site from Southeast Twentieth remains in its current location with a fifty-five-stall parking lot that meanders throughout the site in order to provide access to the structures. And then moving north, we generally keep the existing trail network outside of relocating trails to allow for the nine-hole optional disc golf course, which would also spill into Big Rock Central. Then zooming in a little bit, there is a universal play area in yellow that's just south of the pool house. And this will include both accessible and inclusive play elements, along with smaller play installations along the trail. There are a number of trails that move throughout the property and connect different programmatic elements. Like Beaton, the paved accessible trails are noted in white, and soft surface trails are in that smaller brown color. Garden areas will build upon the existing gardens on site and are intended to be accompanied with signage or other educational components to teach about the plants on the property. And then a new picnic pavilion is located where the old garage was situated. Now, adaptive reuse of the existing buildings was a major component of the final master plan. The barn, residence, and pool house are all proposed to remain with improvements to support community use. So the barn can host a variety of events with an occupancy of up to one hundred and fifty people. A new trellis on the south and a covered patio on the north will allow for an open entry and the ability to expand events. And then the second floor is removed to allow for greater flexibility for future uses. And then one thing to note for the barn is that due to the parking lot capacity, any larger events would require off-site parking. And then next is the residence. So proposed improvements will allow for community meetings and smaller events. And the second floor will not be accessible and will be used for storage only. For the pool house, improvements will create one small meeting room. A new trellis or covered arbor is proposed and just to the west of the pool house and will allow for a larger outdoor gathering area and the ability to expand events beyond the capacity of the interior structure. And then the new garage on site will be improved to create a parks, maintenance, storage, and shop area. And a restroom will be built and integrated on the north end of the garage and will be available for park patrons. Similar to Beaton, approximate costs for each segment are provided on this slide. Included are mobilization and overhead, soft costs like design and engineering, sales tax, and contingency. Central Park is in pink, trails and restoration in green, meeting and event areas in purple, and then universal play is highlighted in yellow. So that was a lot of information. I wanted to thank you for listening. And before our discussion, I would like to take a moment and welcome Nancy Way, our Parks and Recreation Commission Chair, to read a letter of support that the commission voted to provide to City Council. And after Nancy speaks, Mary would also like to say a few words. So take it away, Nancy.
I'm never sure that these are tall enough for me. Okay, good evening. My name is Nancy Way. I'm here as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I'm here this evening to present the commission's unanimous support for the adoption of both the Beaton Hill and the Big Rock South master plans. First, I would like to say that, and point out to you that it's unusual for us to bring two parks' master plans to you at the same time. But reviewing both these sites at the same time was a stroke of planning genius on the part of our park staff, as it resulted in time and cost savings while allowing us to thoroughly review separate properties that will eventually be joined together. I also want to thank the Parks Commission as developing and renewing plans for these was a very, they were very diverse sites, so the planning was very complex. What are we going to do? The sites are so different. How are we going to coordinate? What can we offer here? This hard work allowed us to develop both plans or both parcels in a way that integrates them into a whole plan for superior results. So the park staff deserves credit for that. And these master plans, as Shelby has said, are a result of more than a year of input. We received a wide-ranging grocery list of the things that people wanted to see included. A pee patch, improving existing buildings for community use, a dog park, a nine-hole disc golf course, and pickleball courts, the ubiquitous pickleball courts. Parking, accessibility restrooms, and enhanced trails were also on our list. How are we going to get it all in? We made, the staff made outreach to residents and neighbors. Staff led by Shelby and our consultant co-listed all of these ideas into preferred plans for the commission to review at its meeting in February of two thousand twenty-three. And then we met with you as in a joint mission session again in March of two thousand twenty-three. There, you, of this year, actually, and unanimously approved the preferred plan and authorized staff to begin CIPA review. The Parks Commission reviewed it again in October, just a few weeks ago, and again, we unanimously endorsed it. We ask for your approval tonight of both plans and look forward to adding two more outstanding parks to the Sammamish arsenal. So thank you very much, and I'd like to introduce Mary. I'm thrilled that she is here to answer your questions about her former home.
I'm Mary Pigott, and I know this is tall enough for me. And I'm thrilled to be here. I cannot overstate how excited I am that this is coming to this place of, hopefully, again, unanimous acceptance of this master plan. So I'm thrilled with the way that the process has worked. And I couldn't be happier with the overall design. Of course, there are pieces I would do differently, but it's not about what I want. I got to do what I wanted for a long, long time. And this is about the community, and I absolutely cannot overstate how impressed I am with the community outreach that's been part of the process from the very beginning. And it's, it's just, it just makes me so happy. I have a little story I want to tell you. And I'm probably going to cry, but you'll just ignore that part. It's a happy cry. So I have been lucky enough to receive over the years that the parks, the Big Rock parks, have been open. A number of emails and stories from people who've been in the park and really enjoyed their time there. But recently, I got an overwhelming one that was from somebody I don't know. But she knows someone who knows someone who knows someone who knows me, so I heard about this. And she was going through a really tough time in her life. And she was rhapsodizing to this mutual friend person how great it was to have this place, Big Rock Park, where she could just go for a walk. And she could enjoy being in nature. She could enjoy being around other people, but not like surrounded by other people. It was just, she said, it made the world a different, world of difference. And I have to just be completely candid about it. She also loved the little winding boxes with the stories that I recorded. And so she, when she learned that this mutual friend knew me, she went out and bought this little doodad thing from the drugstore that says Busy Bee Company and sent it to me. And I just, just was, I dissolved. It was such a cool thing. Because I don't know if any of you have listened to the Busy Bee story and about how my grandkids were all upset because it was a stinging bee trail. At any rate, it's just a silly thing, but it was just so touching to me to know that people really enjoy that unstructured time in nature and have this place that's consistent with what my goal was, where they can enjoy that. And then beyond what goals I might have had, there's so much more. And it's all from the very get-go, when the kids were all involved with what did they want in the park, to now what do the adults want and what does everybody want? It's just, it fills me with such joy. And so thank you for making it happen. I really appreciate that. And the Parks Department, kudos, and to the City Council, more kudos, because it's us. It's not anyone element. It's all of us. So thank you very much.
Mary, if I may, really quickly, before anyone runs out of the room, assuming council takes positive action, would like to pause for a photo if we could at the end of this segment.
Are you prepared for that? Yeah. Yeah, okay, perfect, yeah. Yeah. Shelby, did you have anything else before we?
No, I don't have anything else. I just wanted to circle back and end on the slide for what we are seeking tonight from City Council is approval to, for approval, a resolution to adopt the Beaton Hill Park Master Plan and to approve a resolution to adopt the Big Rock Park South Master Plan.
Great, thank you. Mary, I don't know if we can ever say thank you enough. I think every time you're here, every opportunity, we say thank you. It's never enough, but it always feels really nice. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we've all used that park. I think I go there like five times a week. My dogs love it. I am super curious about the stained glass of the chicken coop. That is fascinating. Yes, absolutely. Also, the Sammamish bees. I'm still trying to push that we need a mascot, and it should be the bees. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And Shelby, I know when I first did this tour, I don't even know, last year sometime, it was just so exciting, and you brought so much energy to it. And I think I was just like, I want to go in there, and I want to look at this, and I want to see this. It's such a beautiful area. Absolutely love it. So Councilmember Nupure?
I move that we approve.
We might have some more comments, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We can do it after the motion.
I move that we adopt the Beaton Hill Park Master Plan and the Big Rock Park South Master Plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that before?
Yes, I will speak briefly again. I actually just came back from a weekend visit to the Big Apple. I was in New York City. And I visited, of course, Central Park. And I think that just brought home here. I think even when I was looking at the pictures, the rectangular, you know, nature of this, it's such a wonderful gift. So again, thank you, Mary. I think thank you to the Parks Department. I think this is a legacy that, you know, you are going to leave, Mary, for not just for people who are living here right now, but for generations to come. I would also say that I think it's really important that we have a very solid plan on how we continue to take care of these wonderful parks year over year, right? I think I was reading a little bit history about Central Park, and actually, it has fallen into disarray multiple times and how then the community and just individuals just came back together and, you know, put it, you know, now it's where it's at. Same thing, you know, I visited the Highline Park as well, another wonderful public park, again, started by very few people. So again, I just think it's such a wonderful gift for our planet, for residents here in Sammamish, so thank you.
Councilmember Dreen?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Nancy staff, totally appreciate this and all the joy that it brings. And for me, it's the treehouse, so thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I want to obviously thank you, Mary. It is an amazing, small bit, large pieces of property right in the center of our town that we as a city would never be able to afford to purchase on our own. And it is a gift that we'll give for generations to come, so thank you for that. I want to thank the staff. This was a huge lift and so much public input. And I'm quite amazed at all of the elements that you have fit in and all of the groups of people that you've been able to include and the different needs and the different wants that you've been able to include in this. But to do it in a way that isn't, you know, for me, I'd put it together, it'd be all jumbled together. It's just, it's quite amazing. And I felt like, you know, if you could just have found a way to put a permanent senior center in there, you would have taken care of every need we have in the city practically. It's very impressive. So thank you for all of that. And I also want to give a special shout out to the inclusive nature of the playground. I think that those are elements that we just need a lot more of so that everyone in our community can enjoy the parks and come and play. So I really very much appreciate all this. This is super exciting. I was just sort of thinking about, as we look forward and we look at how our city starts to mature, right? We're going to turn twenty-five next year, right? So we're starting to become young adults as a city. And, you know, we've been a bedroom city, but even a bedroom needs a heart. And I think that as we look at the town center plan and these parks that surround it, I think this really gives us that heart and that place, that sense of place and that sense of place where we can bring people together as a community. So I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Deputy Mary Lamb?
I'm just going to add on to what everybody else is saying and just thank you to Parks. Thank you to the Parks Commission, Mary, everybody that, you guys have worked so hard on this. I mean, I see all the booths that you guys have had and all the engagement. And so it's been really great to see people, you know, in the community giving their input. One of the things, a few of the things that I was really happy about is just the connectivity that you can now start at the top of, like near town center and basically walk using the sidewalk and the new nature path and go all the way to Big Rock Park South and beyond now because you can pick up the sidewalk, you know, once you're on Twentieth. So I think it's pretty amazing that, to me, it feels like the start of something. And when you look at all the parks that we've developed in the past, this is such a huge improvement. And it's so, it just looks beautiful. And the accessibility, which Pam just mentioned, or Councilmember Stewart just mentioned, I appreciate the paths, the accessible paths. It just feels like we can't get enough of them for people that are getting older and for people that are, that have accessibility issues. I'm glad we're keeping the residence. I was really hoping that we would be able to keep it. And the architect seems to have made a way to use that space. There were two things I just wanted to mention. When this first came to council, the pickleball issue, the pickleball, and there were issues about the noise, and I was a little hesitant and I wasn't sure how that was going to play out. And like in the, I think that came to us- And like in the, I think that came to us maybe six months ago, and I just recently, knowing that the plan was going to be discussed this evening, there has been like so much more discussion and progress made on noise mitigation for pickleball that I was really happy to see, that there are now sound barriers that can bring the level of noise from 70 decibels, which is the standard pickleball noise, down to 10, which is actually lower than 10-ness. So, as we progress on this master plan and construction, it's going to be a little bit of relief to know that, you know, the people that live around that area won't, you know, have to, you know, potentially be hearing a lot of the noise, and we, as Council, won't have to be trying to deal with that issue. And the only other thing is the hedge. I see that there's plans either lower the hedge, and I'm still hoping that, because there's going to be whimsical elements in this park, that we use that hedge in some sort of whimsical way, instead of just cutting it down. So, that's my only last ask. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
Well, I can't believe this has come together as beautifully as it has. I mean, I should believe it, because we have very high-quality folks that work on our staff, and we're very fortunate to have that, that people have vision. But it all starts with that initial gift and that foresight, understanding that we need a respite. We need a respite. We need a place, not just for our heart, but for our souls as well, especially now. And I actually think as Sammamish progresses as a community, as an entity, that these parks become even more important and play a bigger role in who we are, what we want to be, and how we maintain our sanity. So, I see this as saving our sanity, for now and in the future. It's that big a deal, and thank you so much.
Councilwoman Rofail.
If I can find my button. Mary, I just want to thank you. I would like to reiterate everything everyone has said, but I think you have probably provided Sammamish with our version of Central Park. And generations to come, after long of us, all of us are long gone, people will still be enjoying it. So, thank you very much for such an amazing legacy that we probably could never have put together on our own, so we're deeply grateful to you. Thank you so much. I had, did have one question, maybe for City Manager, maybe for Anjali, that we had somewhere in our budget about a potential early opening of Big Rock Park South, and I wonder, do we have any thoughts about when that's likely to happen?
Yes, I'd be happy to take that. So, the Washington Trails Association is helping us with getting the trails in the north half of the site of Big Rock South to a point where I think by the end of this year, we should be able to open it up to the public. And there is another interesting project we're working on is a fence line to cordon off all the buildings for now, and our youth board has painted some panels that will be mounted on that fence. And we will also look at opportunities, if Council is interested in painting panels and maybe some of our staff, and so more to follow on that. And we are also looking at the maintenance access that goes all the way to Southeast 20th Street, and seeing if we can open that as well. So, by the end of this year, someone should be able to walk from Southeast 20th Street via the maintenance access and get to the north half of Big Rock South.
That's wonderful. Anjali, I have just one last follow-up question. These wonderful master plans that I'm fairly sure are going to be approved tonight, will, when it comes to starting working on that, will they be worked on in a phased way, where we will kind of portion out the plan, or is it kind of like, no, we instigate a master plan and we do it start to finish, once we have all the money, or is it done kind of in a more phased fashion?
It will be done in a phased fashion, and you will hear more about it as we bring the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan to you, and we bring the Capital Improvement Plan. You'll see how the phasing, the dollars, and all of that line up.
Awesome, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary.
All right, Council, we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor to approve the Beaton Hill and Big Rock South Master Plan, say aye. 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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Picture time. All right, thank you again, and thank you, Nancy, for being here for the commission as well. Okay, next up, we have item number 11, the Fire Station 83.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Switching gears to facilities, your next topic is the renovations and improvements to Fire Station 83. We will present the outcome of the feasibility study, as well as a design contract for Council's consideration. This fire station, along with Fire Station 82, are the two fire stations that handle the bulk of the calls for emergencies for the city of Sammamish. The project's scope is along the same lines as the renovations and improvements to Fire Station 82, which is currently under construction. There are some differences, however. The site is slightly larger, and in this case, we are adding an elevator, solar panels to the roof, and building it to the new energy code. All to say that it is going to be a little more expensive than Fire Station 82. And we'll go over these in the presentation. I will turn it over to Kevin to lead the presentation and introduce staff, and I believe Chief Lane is also here to answer questions.
Thank you, Anjali. And I don't see Chief Lane, are they, I don't know if they're on, but, okay. Okay. Yes, thank you, Anjali, and Council. Again, my name is Kevin Teague, for the record, Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. This next item, we're bringing the feasibility study, which we did for Fire Station 83, along with a design-construction contract for its renovation. So, with us tonight, we have Sevda Baran, our Senior Project Manager for the city, as well as Eastside Fire and Rescue Chief Ben Lane. I think we have Dana Shooter, also the Deputy Chief of Logistics with Eastside Fire and Rescue. We have Gianni Africano with TCA Architects, and I think we have Sarah Ely as well with TCA Architects. All these folks will be available for questions at the end, or to help answer questions as we move along in the presentation. We'll start off with a quick overview of our presentation, and I'll review our objectives. We'll go over the 2018 building analysis, as well as the 2022 feasibility study. We'll discuss sustainability options and the project budget, and review the design contract and project timeline. And then we will invite Council to take action on these items, as you wish. We have two objectives tonight. The first is to review and approve the feasibility study that was done for Fire Station 83, and this was done in 2022. And our second objective is to approve the design contract with TCA Architects for the design of this renovation. Fire Station 83 is located in the south part of the city on Isiqua Pine Lake Road. It was built in 1989, 34 years ago. It was built under the 1985 Building Code. It's just under 7,500 square feet of non-sprinkled space, and the site has 31 parking stalls. And the facility is operated and maintained by Eastside Fire and Rescue and the building owned by the city. In 2018, a building analysis study was completed for Fire Station 81, 82, and 83. This study identified outstanding issues at each of these sites and confirmed the desire to bring all the fire stations into compliance with federal, local codes and regulations. The study found that Fire Station 83 did not meet current building or ADA standards. It did not meet current fire code. The mechanical, electrical, and HVAC systems were outdated. Additionally, the facility does not meet current trends in gender neutrality. There isn't separation between contaminated and clean spaces, and there are no designated gear storage rooms or fitness spaces. Following up on the 2018 building analysis study, the city commissioned a building feasibility study in 2022. And this was an in-depth analysis of Fire Station 83, proposing renovations that address the issues found in the building analysis study. The feasibility study proposes six single-occupant, gender-neutral sleeping rooms, ADA upgrades, including an elevator, upgrades the mechanical and electrical systems, includes the installation of solar panels, adding fire sprinklers to the building, replacing the fire alarm system, and creating a gear storage room and a designated fitness room. Additionally, a restroom on the second floor, as well as redesigning the kitchen and the dayroom areas, and there are other upgrades. So, at this point, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Gianni with TCA Architects to go over the particulars of the design.
Great. Hello, everybody. Gianni here. Appreciate the opportunity to present what we've been able to put together so far, especially with the help of Sevda Baran, who's been very helpful in understanding the needs of this project. We'll start just by a little bit of an overview from the outside. This is a 3D render, just giving an idea of what we're looking to accomplish at the end of this project and our design ideas. As you can tell, we've expanded a little bit of the second floor and built out some of the spaces to provide additional sleeping rooms. Do I have control over the next function? Great, thank you. So, on the first floor, yellow is the areas in which we'll be renovating the existing station. Blue is going to be considered addition, and the striped area is going to be existing space that we are not intending on renovating to a large extent. You'll see the majority of the crew area in the existing building is going to be renovated, and most of the walls will be moved around, such that we'll be able to provide the new spaces that we talked about in the previous slide. The southern blue square there will be primarily the sleeping rooms, and this is a similar configuration to Station 82, for those that are familiar. But like someone mentioned before, there will be a few differences, in particular with the layout of the interior rooms. And as you can also see, the apparatus bays will, for the most part, be left alone. They will be upgraded in terms of the HVAC and electrical systems. However, from an architectural perspective, they will mostly be left alone. Next, please. Going up to the second floor, again, blue is going to be expansion, so what was the dayroom and kitchen in a smaller space serving about four people, we've expanded to provide ample room for kitchen and dining, as well as a firefighter work area, some office space, mechanical rooms, storage, and a convenient dayroom for the crew to be able to relax and unwind a little bit from their shifts. And that's about it. We were intending on trying to expand into an outdoor area, however, we have found some of the challenges from Station 82 may not allow for that. And as mentioned before, the differences between 82 and 83 will be things like the new energy code, which is set to come into effect this coming March. We will be looking to include an elevator into the design, based on some of the findings we had with the city on Station 82. And there will be escalation added to the cost, simply because this project is occurring after 82. Next, please. This is taking a look at the roof. As we talked about before, I know that photovoltaics and panels on the top is something that everybody's very interested in, and we're really excited about trying to accommodate as much of that as we can. The roof on 83 is a little bit more forgiving than 82, as there are some larger spaces to be able to provide kind of more continuous photovoltaics. The more that the roof is broken up, the harder it is to really provide a larger area of these. However, we do have some good south-facing roof slopes, excuse me, as well as east and western-facing slopes. So, we're confident that we will be able to provide some measure of photovoltaic power to the building and understand a little bit better what kind of return that'll be providing. These next slides are just a brief kind of illustration that'll show what is existing, what is being demolished, shown in red, and what is being proposed. From this angle, not a lot is changing. This is facing the street. We'll move on to the next ones with a little more information. This is going to be in the rear of the station, where much of the crew area is going to be demolished, renovated, and then, as you can see on the proposed slide or the proposed image, that will be the new sleeping quarters closest to us in that image. On the eastern side, again, this is where the main entrance will be, in the parking lot. We will be leaving some of the existing exterior walls there, as well as the roof, the host tower, but we will be expanding vertically on the second floor to accommodate a larger kitchen area, dining, firefighter work area, and a dayroom. And as you can tell, not much happening on the west side. This is, we're looking at the apparatus bays, which, as we mentioned, will be pretty much left alone. So, this side of the building will remain as is. So, we've tried to identify some of the things that we'd like to accomplish in terms of sustainability. That's something that we always would like to prioritize as much as possible, especially after seeing this park's presentation with the master plan. Really appreciate how much is going into it, or how much consideration Sammamish is giving into its environment and its community. Some of the things that we're hoping to accomplish here are using salvaged and recycled materials, in particular, some of the brick that's going to be removed, we'll be adding back in. We'll be insulating the walls with high-efficiency and dense insulation, per the new energy code. We're also going to be adding in high-efficiency electric heat pumps, water heaters, and radiant heating, all of which will follow, again, the new energy code. Low ozone impact from these heat pumps will be helpful, and we'll also be looking at trying to provide as much natural daylighting as possible. On the roof, we'll be adding photovoltaics, and we will be installing or adding low-maintenance and drought-resistant landscaping, which will reduce the amount of water used on-site, in addition to avoiding crew having to essentially kind of spend more of their time taking care of the lawn than they do the people that they're serving. We'll also be adding electrical vehicle charging stations, as well as some bike parking areas for those that choose to bicycle to work or to visit the station.
All right, thank you, Gianni. Those guys got the fun part, and now I get to talk about the money, which is maybe not quite as fun. So, our current construction cost estimate to implement all of these renovations, including a 15% contingency, as well as escalation to 2025, and soft cost is, comes in just over $10 million. Tonight, we're seeking Council's approval for the feasibility study that will set in motion this direction of the design for Fire Station 83. And then, secondly, we are asking Council's authorization of a design contract with TCA Architects. The design contract, including a 10% contingency, is $1.2 million, which is based upon the size and complexity of the structure. Council has previously approved $600,000 in the 2023-24 biennial budget within the general government CIP. An additional $610,00146 is needed for this contract. Here's the good news. The bids that recently came in to renovate Fire Station 82 came in under budget in June of this year. The total project costs for that project are now at $7.25 million, rather than the total approved budget of $8 million. So, within that, with that savings, we see that there are sufficient funds in the general government capital fund to cover the additional needs for this design contract for Fire Station 83. 83. With council's approval, the proposed timeline is to execute the design contract soon and then begin the design process, continuing with design and permitting through 2024, bidding the project in early spring of '25, and then, construction would be underway in the spring of 2025 and completed in the fall of 2026. So with that, I think that's a good time to pause and see if council has questions. Again, reminder, we do have Chief Lane on here with Eastside Fire and Rescue, as well as our design team.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. This is great. I've had the pleasure of doing a ride along with some folks over there at that fire station. And while it is a fine building, it is definitely showing its age. Couple of questions about the sustainability pieces. Have we done the analysis yet on, like, how much electricity the building generally consumes and how much we think the solar panels will be able to generate? Like, what percentage of that? Or is that yet to come?
That is yet to come.
Okay. And then, when we talk about having it kind of ready for EV charging, are we also looking at making sure it can do EV charging for the larger vehicles, including potentially one-day fire trucks? Because I would imagine that this building will be around when we do bring online electric fire trucks.
That's a great question. Gianni, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah. So that is something that will be included in the assessment. We're unsure at this point what kind of electrical load that would require. Electrical apparatus vehicles are fairly new to the market and something that we're actively looking into. So at this time, I can't exactly tell you what we're anticipating in the future or how we're going to resolve that. However, as the grid in the area and in the Washington state in general improves, we do imagine that these kinds of capabilities will be something we can accommodate.
Excellent. And then, more, I think, to you guys is, I think that there are a number of grant opportunities out there. So hopefully, we can also recuperate some of these costs. As we look at grants, there's a lot of infrastructure funding available. There's a lot of, especially as you look at sustainability elements, but even just general infrastructure funding, I think there will be a number of those. And I think PSRC is doing a really great job of trying to pull together some resources on various grant pools and grant opportunities out there. So we'll try to make sure, if you don't already have access to that, that we get you some of those for all of this. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Hi. Thank you for your work on this. I'm really happy to see the sustainability items on there. I know when I first got on council that solar panels were not on either fire stations, and we had to do another feasibility study. And from what I hear today, we're still going to hear back on the amount of electricity it's going to generate. But I am really happy to see that we're making that step. And, you know, obviously, if I had my way, I would have solar panels on every city building. My only question is, in the agenda bill, it says that in order for this building to be an essential facility, that it needed to be earthquake-proof. And this couldn't be, because we'd have to tear the whole thing down. What buildings do we have in this city that is considered an essential facility?
City Hall.
City Hall.
Seismically retrofitted, yeah.
Okay. That was all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Nupure.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the library also an essential facility? Do you guys know? No?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because it's not part of our city. Okay. That's, that's fine. I just had a few questions. I think most of my questions were answered on Slide 16. So thanks, Jenny. That was really nice. I think I heard a reference to an elevator. So why do we need that in a two-story building? So that is my first question. So maybe you can start there.
Sure thing. Yeah. So for Station 82, that was something that came up in the permitting process, and we were able to essentially forego the elevator due to some ADA, federal ADA guidelines that gave us the exemption to not do it based on the cost it would require. However, for 83, because of some of the cost escalations and the challenges that we had with permitting, we are looking at ultimately including the elevator design from the beginning. And really, what we're trying to do is provide accessibility throughout the entire building. Because it is a public building, it is something that is required by law so that the public has access and anyone is able to move throughout the building. In spite of its function being a fire station, which may essentially suggest, you know, that it is, it is meant for firefighters to be able to carry out their duties. There are certain, there are several instances in which folks who are needing assistance need to move throughout the building. In particular, something that we've looked at recently are classroom field trips to fire stations for anyone that is handicapped or in mobile for any reason. It's helpful for them to be able to move out, or move throughout the station. And so that is something that we have found out at 82, and we're anticipating designing into 83.
Great. Thank you. My second question was, I know you guys are planning to have electrical chargers on site. Is that going to be available for public to use as well? Or is that just for the folks who work there?
I believe it is going to be located in the public domain of the parking lot. Ultimately, those that park there, most of which will be crew and staff, will likely be the ones that use it. But I do understand from previous conversations that it would be allowed in the public domain. But that is something I'd have to get back to you on for sure.
Okay. And my last question was, I know I haven't done much, much research on this, but what is the advantage of having a solar roof versus like a green roof? Does that matter? How are they different? And is one more economical over the other?
Good question. I would say that they're accomplishing different things, and I'm not sure that I would be able to exactly explain a cost benefit between both of them, or I guess to say which one is better. A green roof is really advantageous because it provides a natural layer of insulation. If you know, you know, the ground in itself is a different temperature than the air, it's got density, and it has earth mass. So oftentimes, you'll see green roofs as a way to essentially provide insulation in the roof, which prevents heat loss going upwards. They're very nice, they're very pretty, they are a bit expensive, and they add a little bit of weight to the roof, which means that the roof structure itself has to be bulkier and more robust. So those are kind of some of the pros and cons of a green roof. The photovoltaics are maybe a little bit more straightforward in their pros and cons. They can typically be installed to most, you know, any type of roof, as long as there is adequate sun exposure. We do understand from this site that although there are trees around the vicinity, that there still would be a decent amount of sun exposure onto the roof for the majority of the year. So ultimately, you are, simply put, recuperating some of the electrical load that you're taking on. And like I said earlier, we're not, we haven't been able to analyze what percentage that might be, what the return on investment would be, and how long it would take to essentially balance out the cost. But strictly speaking, you would gain additional energy from installing photovoltaics.
Thank you.
And I will just say, at least at this point, photovoltaics have come a long way. They're very efficient now. They provide much better energy input than they used to. So they are a good option, and they will, they will do, do good for the project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. This is, just so I understand, so on the ADA side, I understand about the elevator, does that also mean ADA restroom, ADA shower bars, the whole thing? So you're going whole 100% ADA compliance, correct?
Typically speaking, yes. The, the goal is to provide an ADA accessible station. There are certain elements in which we do, between owner and the permitting agencies, we, we talk about different things. Like you mentioned, grab bars in various areas. For 82, just for reference, in the public areas, the public bathrooms and so forth, those were required to and will have grab bars and fully accessible bathrooms. And realistically, anything that has to do with the turning radius or the spacing of a room, those will always be accessible. It's more the smaller things, like you mentioned, the grab bars. The showers in the bathrooms at, at first Station 82 do not have the grab bars installed, but they do have structure in the walls such that grab bars can be installed at a later date should they be needed or required.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yes. And so another, another instance of this is the kitchen. Oftentimes, we do what is called adaptive use, where we design the casework, the sinks and the fixtures such that they can be easily adapted at any point to be, to follow ADA guidelines and regulations. And this is something that the city of Seattle has allowed, many jurisdictions allow, and it is also included in the federal commentary on the ADA guidelines.
Jenny, thank you. I did have a question about the outdoor. You start, you said something about that you couldn't use the outdoor space. You may have answered the question, and I missed it. Could you just go into that for two seconds?
Sure. So it really has to do with the accessibility issue or the providing accessibility. Originally, we had an elevated patio in the design for 82, and we found through the permitting process that without being able to provide elevator access to it, it was not going to be allowed.
Oh.
And so that was something that we had looked into trying to do for 83, and potentially can keep looking into as we move throughout the design process. However, we understand a little bit better the, the context in which the permitting agency will approach, you know, their interpretation of the code.
Okay. Thank you. And Chief Lane, this is for you. Is there anything that you wish was happening that we aren't doing? Like, is there something on your wish list that you look at and go, gosh, I wish we could just do this one last thing?
Well, certainly appreciate the opportunity to have put forward a wish list, but my full confidence is in Deputy Chief Dana Shutter, who has been working with staff not only in the 82 project or the 83 project. So I'm confident that the, the needs of the organization will be very much met in this projected project.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, you, you made this statement that the Station 82 is under budget or will come in under budget. Is, how confident are you that? What's the probability?
Probability, probability is very high. I would say that the 7.26 million that I mentioned includes contingency. It's at least 10%. It might be 15%. So, so, yeah, very confident.
And then, so who's going to manage 83?
This will be managed by Sebda Buran, who's also managing 82 right now.
So at least from what I understand, so far in 82, is that we kind of underpromised and overdelivered and came in under budget? And we'll see what the final product, product looks like, but it seems that we're doing a kind of a good job there where we're underpromising you what's going to actually happen on 82 and then trying to overdeliver. Is that correct?
Maybe not intentionally, but, you know, we'll take it for the win. So.
I just think that, just based, yeah, just based on the last council and the last staff that was running this project when it first started, that was the whole concept, was to underpromise, overdeliver. And I guess what I'm suggesting is, or hoping, is that this current staff and council would also be looking at that for 83, that we would be making sure that the, the money that's being spent is fiscally responsible and that it's going to deliver exactly what Chief Lane and his crew need so that we have responders who are well-rested, well-equipped, well-trained, who are responding to these emergencies. And that was the goal when we started this back, well, even before I was on the council in 2018. So I'd like to see that continued.
And I would, I would say that we are, I mean, we try to be as conservative and as comprehensive in our financial planning so that we're not having to come back and ask for more. We, we don't always get it right, but, but we're doing the best we can and trying to be very conservative with those numbers.
Madam Mayor, is there anyone else who has any more questions? Because if not, I'd like to make a motion. Okay. I'll, I'll wait.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question, and it's great to hear that Fire Station 82 is going to come in under budget, and, and well done. Thanks for that. And so with this additional $610,000, is there any particular reason why we're, why it's running so over? I just was kind of, and you guys may have explained it in your presentation, and I may have missed it, but I just kind of was interested in why that is.
I can speak to it, and then maybe if one of the folks from TCA wants to say something in addition. I know that we are, are designing to a new energy code, and that, that's significant. Also, the, while Fire Station 82 and 83 are similar, they are not the same. And there, there are additional pieces to 83 that drive the cost higher. One of the things is the elevator, and I know that we're planning on about a million, $1 million right there for the elevator. So off the top, those are the, the, the things that I can point to. Gianni or Sarah, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. I'll just continue what you were saying. For the most part, I think you, you touched on the big parts, Kevin. The energy code is going to require us to do a bit more in terms of the systems that we're going to be proposing and installing. Natural gas will not be an option, which has been typically speaking the most cost-effective way to heat, to provide heat. It is the most energy-dense way to heat water and so forth. And so from here on out, we'll have to kind of be leading them. We'll be on the cutting edge of new technology that is all-electric. New products will be starting to come onto the market now, which are going to be a bit more expensive as they're essentially the first generation. And so electric heat pumps on a commercial scale will be something that ultimately drive the cost. The elevator itself will be, will drive the cost. And with an elevator, we need a larger generator to be able to provide power to it in the event of an emergency. And escalation being another thing. Two years later, we are going to be providing a different station. Again, this is something that I think we've looked at previously, where although there are several similarities between the two, the constructability and the changes that we are proposing ultimately are going to result in a different station. I would say those are the main things, in addition to the photovoltaics.
Great. Thank you so much. That clears that up for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Sorry, I meant to ask this the first time around. Because we are going electric, are we also looking at, when we do the solar panels, looking at a hybrid installation option where the, the station could actually pull the power directly from the solar panels in the event of emergencies? And if there's a problem with the power grid? And also looking at potentially storage? Because I happen to know that fuel is, is in fact a huge cost and a huge fluctuating cost for Eastside Fire and Rescue. And again, in the event of an emergency, particularly a prolonged emergency, having the ability to generate power from solar and store it and use it could actually be a huge benefit for the city. So is that something we're considering?
Absolutely. Yeah. We're, we'd be looking at providing as comprehensive a system as we can. And we're not sure at this point, the amount that we'll be able to generate from the roof area that we have, it is, we may be able to accommodate, you know, the entire load of the, the emergency services of the station if the power does go down, but that's not something that I can promise at this time.
Excellent. Okay. I'm, I'm excited to, to hear about that and to see how we can, how that can play out. Because I do think if we did have a prolonged emergency, having that ability to directly use that power that's generated would be awesome. power that's generated would be awesome. And while we talk about cost-effectiveness of things like natural gas, it's not cost-effective when we have to spend millions and millions on the other side to clean up after it. So it's actually far more cost-effective to go with green energy. Thanks. Oh, also, it improves the health of our firefighters, right? Gas stoves are a huge health issue, so getting rid of the natural gas burning inside the buildings will actually improve people's health as well.
Councilmember Trine.
Thank you, Mayor. So I move to accept the feasibility study as completed for Fire Station 83 addition and renovation project and move to authorize the city manager to execute a design contract with TCA Architects and to administer a 10% contingency for the Fire Station number 83.
Second.
Addition and renovation project in the amount not to exceed $1,210,146.
That was a mouthful. Second. All right, moved and seconded. Anyone else? All right, thank you, everybody. All those in favor of...
Speak to that if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So just wanted to say that with the, Fire Station 82 was under budget, and so we underpromised and overdelivered. Appreciate that. This way, an important factor in accomplishing the ability to improve Fire Station number 83. I want to thank the former staff and councils for their foresight so that the city can, currently sits in a position of strength to fund and upgrade Station number 83. The additional costs that will increase by 2025 needs to be addressed by the current staff and future councils. This project needs to move forward to provide the residents of Samamish the comfort in knowing that firefighters are well-equipped, housed and rested when responding to emergency situation. Thank you. I ask that you vote for this measure.
Does anyone else have any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you, Gianni and Sarah, for answering all of our questions. All righty, we are rolling right along to item number 12, Inglewood Middle School Athletic Field Improvements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those who have just tuned in, good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meier, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. And your next topic, we are going to cover both items 12 and 13 in the agenda packet. Both relate to the bid award for Inglewood Middle School Field Improvements Project. One is for the purchase of synthetic turf from a purchasing cooperative, and the other is for general construction of the field improvements. The good news is that the bids have come in well under budget. We've been in front of councils several times with this project over the last few years, starting with the feasibility study in 2020, followed by the design contract last year, and an amendment to the inter-local agreement with Lake Washington School District last month. Tonight is a significant milestone where we are requesting council's approval to proceed with the construction. If all goes well and there are no surprises, the next touch point with council will be at the ribbon cutting later next year. With that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Teague, Deputy Director of our Department, to introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali, and again, thank you, council. This next item, as Anjali mentioned, is number 12 and 13, and I think I handed the mayor a proposed motions, and I put the wrong numbers of the agenda items, so ignore that. This is another monumental milestone for our projects. As you know, this is a project that's been in the works for a long time, and we are really excited to get to this point. And we are at the point where we're ready to award a construction contract for the renovation of the Inglewood Middle School Fields. With us tonight is our park project manager, Michelle Arab, and our consultant from DA Hogan Landscape Architects, Bob Harding. Michelle and Bob are doing a great job managing this project, and as you can imagine, it is a very complex project with many pieces. I've been really impressed with Michelle's ability to keep everything straight and keep this project on track. Bob is truly an expert in, in the field of field design, and so we know that once this is finished, this will be a tremendous asset to the Samamish community. So with that, we'll hand it over to Michelle.
Great. Thank you, Kevin, and good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor, council members, and city manager. Tonight, this one presentation covers two separate agenda items, I believe they're 12 and 13, related to the Inglewood Middle School Athletic Field Improvements Project. We'll briefly review the project background and updates and seek input, questions, and direction on to construction contracts for the overall project and for synthetic turf installation. These contracts represent the culmination of years of planning, design, and direction from council. We're excited to be at this point, and this will be our last presentation related to the project during construction unless contracts need to be amended. We are seeking city council to authorize the city manager to execute two construction contracts and to administer a 10% contingency for the Inglewood Middle School Athletic Field Improvements Project. The first contract is with Specialized Landscaping Inc., the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the overall project in an amount not to exceed $11,548,260. And for the second contract with Coast to Coast Turf through the Sourcewell Astroturf Contract for the synthetic turf installation in an amount not to exceed $2,782,417. Just to orient you again, Inglewood Middle School is located in the northeast part of the city, on the north side of Northeast Eighth Street. For 10 years or more, the city has identified a need for improved or additional sports fields. In support of that goal, in 2022, city council prioritized this project, executed a memorandum of understanding with the district, and authorized our design consultants, DA Hogan and Associates, to proceed with design services. The Lake Washington School District and city have enjoyed a long and mutually beneficial partnership for almost 20 years to offer quality athletic facilities to both students and the greater community. In 2004, the city and the district entered into an inter-local agreement, or ILA. The ILA lays out the terms for joint use of the district's facilities within the city. This partnership with the district is also fitting with the recommendations of our 2018 Pro Plan to address demand for athletic fields. And on September 5th of this year, city council authorized Addendum 4 to the ILA between the city and the district for the athletic field improvements at Inglewood Middle School. Here's a side-by-side comparison of the existing field to the left and the proposed improvements to the right. The football field and track have shifted to the north, making room for two synthetic multipurpose fields with cork infill that will accommodate football, soccer, and lacrosse. The fields to the south will accommodate a 200-foot softball field and a 300-foot baseball field with batting cages, bullpens, and dugouts. All of the fields will be lit during scheduled use only, and this project will provide accessible synthetic turf fields and a new accessible gender-neutral restroom building. We are still on track with the project schedule regarding permitting. The clearing and grading permit with CEPO review has been approved. Final determination of non-significance was issued on September 12. Building permits are still in process, however, no delays or impacts to the schedule are anticipated. And once these contracts are authorized, we will begin the construction phase. While there is prep work to do in the winter, there, there will be a hold on site work until the spring. We have been and will continue to work closely with the school to minimize impacts, and we anticipate that the fields will be open in late summer 2024. Now that we have construction proposals, we can plug real numbers into the overall budget. The good news is that the pricing came in below our design estimate, totaling under $15.7 million. The city costs are covered in the 2023-24 Park CIP budget and are inclusive of all planning, design, and construction costs. We have two construction contracts. The first is for the overall project scope of work excluding synthetic turf installation. The project was advertised for bid on August 3, 2023. Bids were opened on September 14, and a total of nine bids were received. Specialized Landscaping Inc. was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with their bid of $9,615,537. The second contract is for the synthetic turf installation through a cooperative purchasing participation agreement with Sourcewell. On August 10, 2023, the city solicited a proposal from Astroturf, piggybacking off their contract with the co-op. Astroturf's local installer, Coast to Coast Turf, submitted a proposal, and it was opened on September 8 in the amount of $2,316,750. Staff performed a detailed reference check and determined that Coast to Coast Turf is a responsible and responsive bidder. And for your reference, Coast to Coast Turf was the same contractor who did the recent work at Eastlake High School. Costs will be shared with the district per the terms laid out in the ILA Addendum 4. We now welcome your input and questions, and we look for your direction to authorize the city manager to execute these construction contracts and to administer a 10% contingency for the Inglewood Middle School Athletic Field Improvement Project.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Napuray.
Just had a quick question on the estimates. So I think I've heard a couple times this afternoon that the bids have come in low, which is great, but is it because we overestimated because of the supply chain issues that we had during the pandemic? Was that, were we considering that as a baseline, and so we just inflated it a little bit? And then now they're starting to come? Is it just a marketplace thing?
I think there's a little bit of that. I think this project is particularly attractive to contractors. I mean, anytime you have nine competitive bids for a project, that's, that's a good indication that it's a desirable project. So I think, you know, folks, I think there was some ambiguity about supply chain and sort of what's happening after the pandemic with, with bid prices, but at least in this case, it seems to have settled down a little bit more. Bob, do you have any, anything you want to add to that?
No, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, council, and Madam Mayor. No, I think that there is some settling down of pricing and construction, construction costs that we're seeing in, in the local contracting community. And quite frankly, we estimated this very, very conservatively, pretty much at the direction of council to, to make sure that we, we were not going to be over-budget, and much like the last presentation about the, the fire station, it's much better to, to over-deliver and come in at a, at a lower cost point, so.
Deputy Mayor Lam.
So these fields are a huge benefit for our residents, particularly the ones that live on the north end. I know this, like, turning into a very expensive evening. Last year, these fields were, this field, Inglewood, was on our legislative priorities, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get any funds for it. I don't know if it's going to be on our priorities this year, but it sounds like the interlocal agreement is really successful. Is there potential to do one with Issaquah? I think it would be really great to have access on the southern portion of Samamish, particularly for Skyline, Beaver Lake, and Pine Lake.
Thank you for that question, Deputy Mayor. So the city does have a similar interlocal agreement with the Issaquah School District, and both agreements were set up very similarly 20 years ago. But more recently, the Issaquah School District prefers to schedule their own fields. So they're still available to the community after school hours, but the city isn't the one scheduling them. But they have also then taken on the responsibility for maintaining those fields. We will continue to look for opportunities to reengage with them. I, in fact, just received an email to be part of a discussion about their middle school fields, and I'm not in, I don't have all the information, but again, we'll use every opportunity to see if we can bring it back to where we are with the Lake Washington School District.
Awesome, thank you. All right, council to zoom and want to read those motions. Councilmember Howe.
Would it be to authorize the city manager, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Specialized Landscaping Inc. and to administer a 10% contingency for the Inglewood Middle School Athletic Field Improvements Project in the amount not to exceed $11,548,260.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that one is good. Would you like to continue?
I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Coast to Coast Turf through the Sourcewell Astroturf Contract Number 031622-AST for the synthetic turf, including installation, and to administer a 10% contingency for the Inglewood Middle School Athletic Field Improvements Project in amount not to exceed $2,782,417, and no cents.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, those are great. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
And thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to new business? Still you, Anjali? Okay. City of Samamish's Silver Jubilee celebrations.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, city council, Mr. City Manager. It's me again, and I am very excited to introduce your next topic, which is the city's Silver Jubilee. We'll give Kevin a brief break over here. He's going to set up the presentation, and I'm going to have Emily Scott, our Recreation and Cultural Services Manager, join me up front for this presentation.
Do we have Ryan, too, that's online?
No, not this evening. This is just part of the crew that worked on pulling this together.
I'm just looking at my list.
Pulling this together.
Awesome.
I will say, while Kevin's pulling that up, I want to give a shout out to Councilmember Napuray, who came up with the, or said Silver Jubilee. We were struggling with, we're now able to rent a car celebration, or incorporate a birthiversary, which doesn't really roll off the tongue, and so really want to thank Councilmember Napuray for, for reminding that it is 25 years, the Silver Jubilee, and that just sounded a whole lot better. So that's the starting point for this tonight, so thank you.
Samamish was incorporated in August 1999, and next year will be 25 years since we incorporated as a city. Staff have started internal discussions on how best to celebrate this milestone, and this evening, we are seeking direction from council. All departments of the city will be involved in gathering accomplishments and how we've grown over the years. With me tonight is Emily Scott, the city's Recreation and Cultural Services Manager. We have worked with the city manager's office, including Rachel Bianchi, our Deputy City Manager, Ryan Roderick, our Communications Manager, to put together some options for your consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to Emily for a short presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Anjali, for the introduction.
Thank you, Anjali, for the introduction. Tonight, I'm excited to be here to present our ideas on how to celebrate the city's 25th birthday of, or 25th year of incorporation, otherwise known as our Silver Jubilee. Our objective is to facilitate a discussion with council on the best way to celebrate 25 years of Samamish. A brief overview of our staff recommended ideas can be seen here. A silver jubilee booth at major city events, which include Earth Day, Rigapalooza, Fourth of July, Pumpkins on the Plateau, and Frosty Fest. This would be an opportunity for residents to film a short clip for our video compilation with the theme "Why I Belong in Samamish." The second idea we will be discussing is hosting a Silver Jubilee event in August with an art exhibit inside City Hall. Option one, our Silver Jubilee booths could be utilized at our five largest events throughout the year to meet residents where they are. These booths could showcase the city's accomplishments, major projects, and current or historic photos. Our communications department suggested a video compilation with the theme of "Why I Belong in Samamish." The video would consist of short clips submitted by community members sharing why they love and belong in Samamish. Staff could host a booth to gather submissions and record short clips on-site, or residents could also send in clips filmed in different locations. We can celebrate our diversity by having submissions shown in different languages, and the completed video would serve as a digital time capsule of Samamish in our community. Option two is hosting the Silver Jubilee event, which would be held in August, the month of incorporation, and take place in our Upper Commons area. This event would highlight the diversity of Samamish by bringing together different food trucks, performers, artists, and vendors of all cultural backgrounds. The City Hall art exhibit could coincide with this event, and the exhibit would display current and historic images of Samamish, or even highlight the city's accomplishments, accomplishments and growth over the past 25 years. This would be a cross-department effort to gather information on our city's major milestones, but please do keep in mind that this option would require additional budget and staff resources. So our staff recommendation would be option one. Hosting a Jubilee, hosting the Jubilee booths at events throughout the year would give the community members multiple opportunities to participate with us. By creating the "Why I Belong Samamish" video, we would be left with a finished project that could be referenced for years to come. And this option is also the most financially and environmentally sustainable, while being inclusive and inviting to all. At this time, we'd love to hear your feedback and thoughts and questions for our ideas.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you for the presentation and for the work on this. If you could go back to your, the, your, actually, the, did you have one slide that you talked about both options?
Yeah.
Because the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nitpick a little bit with "Why I Belong," it sounds almost offensive.
Okay.
Like I'm explaining why I belong here. And so that might be something to take a look at and, and see if there's a, a different phrasing that you might consider that is, you know, just, "I belong in Samamish," period. And then, then the statement can come after that. You are gonna struggle with getting people to, when I do a video clip. It is extraordinarily difficult to do that. What you will need to do if you want to do this potentially is to expand your concept of not just video, but audio, and actually somebody writing, literally writing something and turning it in. So it becomes more of a multimedia project and not so focused on the visual aspect, simply because the comfort level with people is all over the place. I know this just firsthand, just working with people that you think are gonna handle it, and they do not do well. And they're afraid to have something that goes, that may last for a while in perpetuity that they're not able to come in and correct. You have to get, you have to get releases for every person, too, that you can use it in every way, any way that you want. So that's just another administrative detail that just kind of adds to it. I understand why you, why staff would recommend that approach over, say, a gathering, because we do a lot of gatherings, and it would be hard to make this one special. And I think that's where you're, you're headed, is to try to make something special. So I think I might agree with you that something that incorporates people, that give them a, a longer duration of time to, to, to be engaged, but you're probably gonna be very creative about supplying the materials they need in order to be a part of it, much in the same way that folks were a part of something when they were working on the mosaic. They could pick up a piece and install it. It's, that's sort of the, the idea somehow. Can you get it to that level of be a part of our future because you're, you know, you're here now and part of our past, and to have them be part of, like, an installation type of a project that has a bit of them in it somehow? So those would be my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Nupure?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think what I see, you know, as soon as you presented the first slide, is really that you want community input, right? And I think that is something, I think that it's on brand for the Parks Department, is just go out and ask people what they want. So I really like that idea of having booths across, and I think that's, that's my assumption, that you want ideas from people on how to celebrate the Silver Jubilee. Is, was that the event, or was it just to say, this is our 25th year? Was that what it was?
The latter, yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was like the other way around, where I'm gonna ask people, because it has all these, like, sticky there, so I was like, oh, maybe people can just give ideas. Okay. I think, you know, is, do we have a time capsule somewhere in the city?
We do have one from when we turn 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would love to, and, and when is that going to be opened again?
When we turn 50.
Okay, okay.
Golden Jubilee.
Okay. So I mean, I think it would be wonderful to, you know, just collect some artifacts and then, you know, keep it in a time capsule for some other time, maybe not 50 years, maybe something a little closer. I, I personally like something tangible where people can come back and celebrate. So, you know, I was thinking, can we plant 25 trees? I mean, you know, this is just an idea, but, you know, something like that where people can come back and say, oh, yeah, I planted that tree when I was, you know, 10, and now I'm, you know, older, and I can still see that tree, so see it grow. So it's also their legacy. I mean, some other ideas, but again, I think it's a lot of, like, public input. I don't know, in August, you know, if people are around or not. But I, I would love to see just like a community picnic, right? Like, everybody just brings their own food, and you have a big parties, but you don't have to pay for it because people get their own food. So I would love to see something like that. But something tangible is what I would love to see.
Deputy Mary Lamb?
So I have a few ideas. Mine's more of a mashup of the two. I like the idea of swag. We can't have a celebration without some good Silver Jubilee swag that we can give out throughout the year, just to remind people. And I do like the idea of booths, only because, one, it's cost-effective, but it's like a year-long celebration, which I think would be really great. I like the idea of some sort, something sort of tangible that will live on in the future, whether it's just planting one tree, you know, in a, you know, one tree with a plaque somewhere, just as a reminder. I don't know if there's, we're not opening anything this year. Like, if we were, we could dedicate whatever it is to this year. So my mashup is having the booths, but the Fourth of July is like really our big event of the year. Can we carve out, like, an hour out of the stage? You know, there's a band and a stage. Can we carve out an hour to have music from 1999 and bring?
Sorry. We're gonna party like it's 1999.
Yeah, party. So we'll play music from 1999. We can bring back, you know, former mayors, maybe residents that have lived here since, you know, since incorporation, maybe some new people, and kind of, you know, bring them on, you know, within that hour. I just think it would be a really fun way to kind of not just have booths, but something that's cost-effective, and it, you know, it won't cost that much money, since the stage is already gonna be there, and we'll already have a band. It'd be super cool if we could, like, do a drone thing that spelled 25 before the fireworks, but I know that's not gonna happen. And, and there was the art exhibits inside City Hall. I would love to see historical photos. Is there a combination of historical photos and art that we could just weave throughout the year? Because what a great reminder for people that are coming to City Hall, that that is the 25th year, and to be able to see the photography. And we could open it up during, during, City Hall, during the, during these city events where people can come through City Hall and take a look at the photos. So those were my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Do you guys just, like, brace for impact when you come? And you're like, we're gonna ask them all what they want, and then we're gonna get, like, all these ideas? Just as we continue to evolve, so I kind of like the idea of both. I'd be curious to know, when we talk about extra money, how much extra? As Anjali will remember, we used to have an August event every year. It incorporated the Kids' Mud Run, and then in the evening, we used to have a party on the plateau, the pop, Samamish pop. So I, I'd love to know a little bit more about how much it would cost. I do think this is a big deal. And I know we do have a lot of events, but all of our events are hugely participated in, right? Like, lots of people come. It's something that our community loves. So, you know, is it something we could incorporate and, and partner with the chamber, with local businesses, and with some of our local nonprofits, so the city doesn't have to carry the entire burden of the cost and have something special in August? I mean, if you really wanted to do it with something we're doing, we could have it on the new Inglewood Fields, because I think they're gonna open around the same time. No, I think it would be really fun to still celebrate and have a separate event. But I do like the idea of all year long, up until that point, having booths and being able to get something, whether it be something written, or like building a mosaic. That would actually be kind of cool, if, if we had something like that, that we did at, at the various booths. But I, I think it's a big enough deal. I think we should have, like, a, a separate thing. I like the idea of Fourth of July. The only challenge with that is it's so big, and so many of the people that come to our Fourth of July celebration aren't actually from Samamish. So that's why I think I kind of like the idea of having our own little celebration. But I'm aware that it's, it's, it's extra work, and it could be extra money. So I'd love to get a little bit more about that. I just think it's, I think it's kind of awesome. I think we should celebrate. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. I like option one. And I think that we could probably then develop the Fourth of July around that theme, that we could make that maybe like the culminating event, because we do get so many people here. But I, I like option one. I like kind of a slow, steady celebration throughout the year and give as many people opportunities to come as, as possible. I think when we're doing the booths, the booths should look really special so that it attracts people over to it. I like the whole idea of, you know, the before and after photos. This site used to look like this, and this is what it looks like now, and this is what we've accomplished over these 25 years. So I, I really like that. The other thing I think maybe we might look at is maybe an adjustment to our city logo, maybe a 25 anniversary ribbon that would go across it, that it would denote everything that we do, that, I'm not sure how expensive that is, but that would, certainly, I'm sure we will do that on our website, on our newsletter, that we would have like a 25-year anniversary ribbon across everything we do, so that no one is in any doubt that we are 25 years old. So I like option one. I like giving our residents as many opportunities to come and celebrate and, and find out about, and learn that, oh, we are 25 years old, because we've lots of people who are, who've lived here maybe only five, 10 years, and have no idea what's been here prior. So that's kind of my little bit of input. But I think Fourth of July is a great opportunity to kind of make more of this. We get so many people here, as you guys know, and, and I think having a, a birthday party type thing in August, I'm not sure, we have a lot of people who live here who are not even going to be in Samamish in August. It's a big vacation time where people leave the city. So I'm not sure how good the timing would be on that. Fourth of July would be a much better opportunity, I think. Thank you.
Councilmember Nupure?
Quick question for the staff. Do you think having a committee, so smaller committee to help you with this, would be beneficial? Or a work group?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm happy to take that one. I think tonight, we were looking for a little bit of direction about where to focus our efforts and resources, and we, in the, at the staff level, we quickly figured out that there's sort of two ways we can go, and I, and I hear the sense to try to mash those together. I think we bumped into the same notion that August is a time where people trickle out, and it's hard to get people together. The Fourth of July, at the same time, is also, has been pointed out, it's a very large event, and it really, the, the main event is at 10 o'clock at night. And, and so the challenge that you run into is how to put something on that people, you know, if you ask them to come earlier than that, sticking around, I know the staff and, you know, some of us are coming at, at four and being here until, you know, 10:30 or 11. That makes for a very long event. So I think we're trying to find a way to thread the needle, if you will, about where's the right approach and the right time to, and, and what would that be? So I think from the perspective of we can take this back and massage it a little bit, we wanted to come well in advance of both final decisions on the budget, because again, wanted to make sure if council wants us to look at committing resources beyond what we can currently do with what we have, we wanted to be clear about that and make sure that was something that was directive of council, and then to try to figure out what that thing would be. So I think we've gotten enough to take back and do a little bit more work, and we can come forward with, and I think that would, what would come forward with, what it might look like and what it might cost. One of the pieces that I know, when we host events on the Fourth of July, we pay a premium across the board. It doesn't matter what it is, we're paying top dollar, kind of the very height of the market for whatever that service is. Bands, food trucks, fireworks, the whole nine yards. And so we're just trying to be prudent about how and what we did when we, when we tried to decide what to come up with. But we appreciate the feedback. I think the, we have a very creative team. Emily's great at, and the team is great at coming up with different ideas and concepts, so we can come back with a revised approach based on what we've heard tonight.
Yeah, is there anything that we would drop to, like, replace, you know, out of that list? I mean, that's obviously, that's a terrible question, because how would you pick? I just am like, yeah, I don't know. You don't have an answer. I'm just sorry. Is there another option?
Well, Mayor, what I would say is, is option one, really try to capitalize on what we currently do. So we're gonna be there anyway. We're always gonna have staff at those events. We host those events, and it's a real opportunity just to sort of supersize them, if you will, a little bit with Silver Jubilee, a, a table and sort of interactions with the community. I think that's the difference between operating within our means and trying to do pieces, and then coming back and saying, we're gonna, we're gonna carve out a separate piece. I think we would want to do the, that, the option one regardless. I think it makes sense. I think it's the opportunity to, I think, I can't remember who said it, and apologies for that, but that, touching folks across the year, that it's not just a one-time event, it's a, it's an all-year event. Oh, thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell. That, that I think that's another important piece, is to say, you know, lots of times, people complain that government takes time to make decisions, but I also think it's the opportunity to take the time to celebrate. And things have changed a lot in 25 years. And I think that opportunity to take a look back and say, wow, where did we start and where are we now, is a real, it's a real opportunity for us, and I think that's where we wanted to make sure we were hitting events throughout the year and, and celebrating.
No, that makes sense. Yeah, I think Deputy Mary Lamb started the mashup idea, so I think that's good. We'll have DJ Anjali on the stage. Be perfect. Oh, Councilmember Stewart?
Two things. One, I think what happened is you didn't put the big "or" on the slide, so we picked both. But in all seriousness, I, I think that there is definitely, I think, I think a real opportunity to have something special, and if we're gonna look at historical, to also to have something special and if we're gonna look at historical, to also put it in historical context. I like the idea, because a lot has changed since 1999, not just in Samamish, but in the region. And really, when I think about things like technology and the world and things that have changed, so I think that's also kind of a cool theme to put it into perspective for people, to show them how all of, you know, how, how things change over 25 years. Except for us, we all are ageless.
I was just gonna say, sorry, I just kind of jumped in, that the Arts Commission, if we, you know, kind of added on to Councilmember Stewart's idea, they could probably come up with something creative that could integrate photography with some of the elements she's talking about.
All right. I'm sure that was super clear direction. Great. Wonderful. Thank you, Emily. Welcome back, Kevin. Item number 15, the, ooh, PSA, approval notice for the McLean property.
Thank you, Mayor. While Kevin is getting that presentation up for you, I did want to acknowledge his work tonight. He's had all four from land acquisition, master planning, design, and construction. We got one of each agenda bill into tonight's meeting. So this is your last topic for tonight with us. And this is the purchase of the McLean property. And I do have to acknowledge staff from our Public Works team, staff from both Public Works and the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department have worked together on this acquisition. And we are joined by Audrey Starcy, our Public Works Director, Jed Ireland, Senior Project Engineer, also in Public Works, and Kevin Teague, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. I did want to note that funding for this acquisition is budgeted in the General Government CIP for Maintenance Yard and is separate from the funding in the Park CIP for Land Acquisition for Parks, as guided by the city's Land Acquisition Strategy and Implementation Program. City Council authorized the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement in July of this year for the McLean properties. Staff have since completed all the studies necessary during the inspection period of the purchase and sale agreement. And Kevin will share the findings in his presentation.
Thank you, Anjali. And again, my name is Kevin Teague, for the record, Deputy Director, and appreciate our, our friends in Public Works joining us tonight. So if you have specific questions about the potential use of the site, I'm glad to have them with us as well. So we are at a point with this McLean property where we're in accordance with our purchase and sale agreement, the, the next step would be for council to authorize the notice of approval, which essentially ends our due diligence period and sets things into motion to move towards closing on the purchase of this property. Just to remind you, the property is in the southeast part of the city, at the intersection of southeast Isaguá Falls City Road and Isaguá Pine Lake Road. So if we zoom in a little bit, you can see that it is a fairly large site with good road access on two sides. The property is made up of two parcels. There's one small one on the south and then the large parcel on the north. The property is 7.63 acres and there has been a portable building on the site. Our Public Works Department has recently been leasing a portion of the site for material storage, such as sand and gravel, and that's been ongoing over the, about the last year. This is, there is a large wetland in the northern part of the site and the current use area is all in the south part of the site. The negotiated sale price is $1,450,000. As I mentioned, council approved entering into the purchase and sale agreement in July of this year. And this initiated a 90-day inspection period. And during this time, the purchaser being the city, has the right to terminate the agreement for reason or no reason. Staff mentioned in July that we would return to council with the results of our due diligence and our recommendation regarding this purchase. And as the purchaser, the next step is for the city to issue this approval notice at or before the end of our inspection period, if the city would like to move forward with this purchase. Once the approval notice is issued, closing will occur within 30 days. So over the past few months, during our inspection period, staff have completed a number of studies on the site. First, we did what's called an ALTA survey, which stands for the American Land Title Association Survey. This is the most comprehensive land title survey. It plots each element in a title report, showing graphically where easements and encroachments are on the property. An ALTA survey is a specialized type of boundary survey of a property that adheres to the strict standards developed by the American Land Title Association. We also did a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, commonly referred to as an ESA or a Phase 1 ESA. This is completed to research the current and historical use of a property, to assess if current or historical property uses may have impacted the soil or the groundwater beneath, beneath the property, which could pose a threat to the environment or to human health. And lastly, we did a wetland delineation, which locates and classifies any onsite wetlands and determines the required buffers. As mentioned, the site is heavily encumbered by wetlands and we knew that. And there's also a stream that flows through there. The study shows us how much of the site is usable. When you add the wetland buffers in, you can see from this graphic that the southern portion of the site is usable. It is outside the wetland buffers. There is approximately 1.5 acres of usable area, once you account for the wetland buffers. And this is slightly larger than the size of the Sweene Lot, which is on the notch property, just to give you a sense of context there. After completing our analysis, staff are recommending, recommending moving ahead with this purchase. The city has a growing need for an operations yard space and there is an efficiency to dispersing snow and ice materials in the southern part of the city. This way, staff working in that part of the city have ready access to needed materials without having to drive all the way to the north into the city to the MOC. The site has good road access on two sides, which makes it easier for pulling larger trucks in. And then we know that there are limited properties in the southern part of the city for this type of an operation. Additionally, the city is in the midst of a facility needs assessment, being prepared by a consulting firm called Makers. We, we asked for their assessment of the site and they are in agreement with our recommendation. There is a letter in your packet with their recommendation. So with all of that, I'd like to pause and see if council has any questions or would like to discuss this further and, or again, if you have questions for Public Works.
Councilmember Howe?
I just have one quick question. And it has to do with the appearance of the site, because right now, it's, it's, it is kind of a mess. And is your plan in the future potentially to be able to create some visual barriers to some of the things that will be behind and in use?
Certainly, the first step would be fencing. I know that the contractor that had been utilizing the site removed their fencing. And so securing the site would be the first step. While we haven't planned for this financially, it has been discussed that this is sort of a gateway into the city.
It is. It's the first thing you see.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I understand that you're conscious and aware of that. And so, and I understand it also is a budgeted for. So it's just one of those things that I think we're just gonna have to pay attention to as we get closer to doing something. Thank you.
Councilmember Napuray?
Thanks, Mayor. I think that's a really good point. Councilmember Howe, about, you know, that's the entryway to the city and so, because I know I'm very aware of just our signage, which says, welcome to Samamish in that area. So my first question was that if we are going to use this site for ice and snow, you know, for ice and snow activity, will there be storage at both the facilities? So it's not just this one? Okay. And then potentially, would you consider building something in this, this particular, you know, whatever acre-plus land as well, like as a structure? Is that something that is being envisioned in the future?
That, that is a very real possibility. We'd need to do some additional study of that, but we do feel that there is potential for a structure on this site as well. I mean, we mentioned snow and ice, but there may be other uses from the Public Works standpoint that they could see for utilizing this space.
And actually, I had a question about the first picture that showed on the slide. I wasn't sure, is that from the property?
No.
No? Okay.
That's from our, let's see.
We thought it was a nice picture for the, for the presentation.
Yeah, I was like, that's very interesting. What is that? Thank you.
All right, council. Does anyone have any questions? I do have a motion, if anyone would like to do that.
I move to authorize the city manager to issue the approval notice to McLean Investments LLC to purchase property, King County Tax Parcels, 222-406-9064 and 222-406-9065 at 5124 Isaguá Pine Lake Road, southeast Samamish, Washington, 98029.
Second? All right, moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to your motion?
No.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Awesome.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thanks for staying on too, Audrey. Yeah. Yes. Congratulations, you too. Yeah. All righty. Scott, city manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. A reminder that Saturday is the Comprehensive Plan Workshop. I just want to remind that that is open to the public. If you want to come sit with us for the day and learn all about the different chapters of the comp plan, I encourage anyone that is interested to come join us. And we'll see all of you there on Saturday. I also, there is a draft letter, or it's not a draft letter, it's a letter that Arch, the Regional Housing Coalition that we're a part of, is asking for support for their grant. And the last time an issue like this came up, council directed that any letter that's gonna be signed by the mayor on behalf of the council be brought to in public. So bringing the letter to you all and recommending that council give approval for the mayor to add her signature onto that letter and support the grant request. No, I think just, I had not from council, there's plenty and I'm getting that. So we will move forward. I believe we might even have a copy of the letter tonight. Mayor, if you can sign it on your way out, we will be good to go with that. And with that, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
On Friday, I'll be attending the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I sent out an email about that. Some of the main topics is, we'll be discussing mixed waste processing and some of the ways that different cities are approaching it. An update on the Cedar Hills landfill and two new transfer stations that will potentially open, one in 2026 and one in 2029.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, Councilmember O'Farrell and I attended the K4C Elected Officials Roundtable Discussion. It was incredibly informative, I thought. A lot of discussion from some of the state officials around what's happening and lots of the participating cities. It's rather timely when you look at the Station 83 upgrade, right? So looking at some of the laws that are gonna take effect and some of the new codes that will take effect for the building codes. All of that's gonna be hugely instrumental, though, in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions from our built environment. So I don't know, Councilmember O'Farrell, you had anything in particular? There was also actually a lot of discussion around grant money. And again, getting some assistance on how to tap into a lot of the funds that will be coming available. So I think the fact that we have our climate action plan well underway and hopefully we will start implementing things soon, sooner rather than later, the timing actually works out quite well, because there is going to be, I don't, I forgot to bring my notes, but there were, there were numbers with Bs in the billions of dollars flowing down from the federal government.
I just wanted to add that I had talked to members of Shoreline City Council, who were there, who are going to be unveiling, I believe it is a project, the beginning of December, December 9, they are planting a mini forest. And I had brought that up at the meeting as a means of CO2 sequestration. So they came to me and said, yeah, we're actually working on that. So I'm gonna go and attend their opening and see what that's all about and maybe that's something, as a city, we can take a look at down the road. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Howe?
At the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting, we're working on the legislative agenda and helping with the redrafting of the letter. And I just wanted to just bring everybody's attention to the fact that a piece that I think was missing out of the legislative priorities is the fact that we are all in the process, many municipalities are in the process of trying to bring affordable housing to bear, which requires transit. And transit was not specifically addressed in that letter. So I think that's a miss and I'm gonna make sure that that gets added, but there may be other misses. And so I, you know, I'm asking for you guys to take a look at it. And this brings up the fact that the Legislative Committee is also gonna be meeting shortly and it's Rasheen and, and me? That's it? We're lonely and alone and it's the two of us, but we'll do a good job, won't we, Rasheen? Indeed. Thanks.
All right, if there are no other reports, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All right, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, have a good night, everybody.